... This is called the order. Can you hear me better, this way? This way? Okay. Uh, would you please stand...
(Crosstalk). 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 (Crosstalk).
Go call. Yeah. Here. Company. Here. Brad.
Here.
(Inaudible).
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Easter.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Doran.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to have a... (Inaudible) to the agenda. I would like to move item sixteen after twelve seats.
(Crosstalk).
Second. Motion by China, sent by Easter to approve the agenda. Would be changed, all those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Uh, senior packet on page one and two is the (Inaudible) economic development integration talking about the (Inaudible) chores in the U.S. And, uh, if you haven't read it, please take time to do that. And our second one, um, is from the Wisconsin Council Association and the Council Association and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities which have joined into one group, and that's on pages three through five. Uh, please take time to read that. And then we got a, uh, a note from Ron Mint on page six, uh, telling us how beautiful it is, uh, when people are coming to our city with our beautiful flower baskets, and just wanted us to know that, that brightens everybody's day that comes to visit us. Okay, at this time, as the citizens' forum, there's a chance for citizens to make comments, free and courteous at all times. Remember that this is not meant to be an opportunity to make personal attacks on any city official. No action or lengthy discussions can take place as a result of comments made at this time. Are there any citizens that would like to come forward? Any citizens?
Judy, I got a letter from, uh, one of my people in my ward. Do you want me to read the code made tonight? Can I read it?
Okay, yes, you can do that.
Okay, this is...
Would you use a microphone? Live phone, please.
This is from Catherine Murphy. It has come to my attention through a Facebook posting that someone is going to propose a new swimming facility and have named after a recent deceased, Mr. Hickelman. She would like to propose a facility also educated on heart health. It suggests we, city, put a little look into grants, monies to cover the costs of the building such as funding long-term sources and revenue costs of initial labor work to secure funding. I agree, the death of a young man is indeed sad, and family must be grieving. I don't think the city of our size can support two facilities. I know the CHS rec center is controlled by the school board, and is not part of the city's park and rec department, and definitely it is part of the city, would only be operated one. New facilities, seeing as we already have a pool facility at the rec area, wouldn't it be better financially to have one support, one facility? Even if we are able to secure a hundred percent of the money through existing grants that are needed to build such a facility, there still is cost associated with running the facility such as staff operating expenses, expenses and maintenance. As a taxpayer, I do not want future budget increases made to keep both the rec center and a proposal new facility open. I also think the current outdoor pool had all been this successful, successful life and funnel money into sedimental reason is foolish. I think we should support one facility already in our town, and maybe create one. Why wouldn't, why couldn't this be done at the current CHS rec center? Okay, you don't need to look too far to see another small town that has presented with a similar situation of having two existing facilities with one needing major repair in London. If what they... I was in my early teens at the very old days when the city of Platteville built their indoor pool for quite a few years, both the old pool and indoor pool were operated in tandem. Eventually, it became clear that the outdoor pool had to be closed because it was not sound financially and keep pouring money into the (Inaudible) facility. When the outdoor pool was much cheaper to purchase a summer pass to swim there than to swim at the indoor pool. Like many parents, I'm sure my parents grumbled about the added costs. I don't know how they did it, but my sister and I had (Inaudible) in the indoor pool. Catherine Murphy. And also, we talked about, if we're gonna do this, she says, uh, the children could be bored, and spend this kind of money on something like that, shoot holes in their referendum.
They're still at the (Inaudible) committee level talking about this, so nothing is set in stone right now, okay?
But that's what she wrote.
Okay, and there will be a presentation, and we'll look at that with some ideas so that everybody can see what they've looked at up to this point. Uh, any other citizen care to speak? If not, I will hold the citizens' forum. Oh, I'm sorry. If you would state your name and address, please.
Brad, Rowkis, two thirteen North Clinton Avenue. I wasn't gonna speak tonight because, well, it's not like the road record, I've been saying things like, meeting after meeting after meeting, and recent track record to show that I only heard what wants to be heard. Um, so slightly different, you're gonna go into closed session, you're gonna talk about what you're gonna talk about, you're gonna decide what you're gonna decide. The one thing I would request, and you may or may not do it, is, uh, when you come out of closed session, it would be nice that, I know you can't discuss what was discussed in closed session, but whether no action was taken, or just simple, some action was taken, just an acknowledgement of the people that do stick around and wait for the end of the meetings, because they are extremely interested in what's going on, whether they agree or disagree, everyone wants answers one side or the other, so that would be my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Anyone else? Okay, if not, citizens' forum is closed. Uh, pages seven through ten are the minutes from July eighth, twenty-eighth, and August seventh. Motion to accept them. So move.
Second.
Motion by Easter, second by Doran, to approve the agendas for July eighth, twenty-eighth, and August seventh. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. At this time, I would like to introduce, um, two folks from the League of Wisconsin's municipalities that will be showing a video here, Dennis Pudiel and Sherry Briggan. Catherine, ready? Thank you, so...
Thank you, mayor, and thank the council. I'm Dennis Pudiel, I'm from Madison, and I'm pulling that against me, somebody's got a little problem, I'm one of them. The, uh, you are one of three hundred and eighty-five cities and villages that we insure in the League of Municipalities Insurance Program. And, um, over the course of the years, we have shown the video that you're about to see, it's about seventeen minutes, the people in the audience, you'll probably learn a little bit more about insurance than you won't to, but the insurance we're talking about tonight is public official liability. So we're not talking auto, we aren't talking, um, entries, you know, playgrounds, anything like that. We'll cover a little bit of that statutory protection that you have. Well, what we're talking about tonight is what's commonly referred to as public official errors and omission, it's really professional insurance for you as sitting elders and for the young heir. And the reason that this is important is, this is the type of coverage that takes care of intentional acts. So if you intend to not issue a license, if you intend to not do a variance, um, if you intend to do any personnel action, this is the, this is a policy that gets involved because it wasn't an accident, what, maybe somebody just didn't like the outcome. The reason that this is important to us as an insurance companies and for you is, in the state court system, we have very good statutory protections. I'll briefly touch on those afterwards. However, many of the cases that are covered under here end up in federal court. And when we're in federal court, there are no statutory gaps, and if we lose, depending on the type of action, we pay the plaintiff's attorney fees. Right now, we're going to raid in front of the federal court systems, and the state of Wisconsin is above four hundred and fifty dollars an hour. We've had many cases where we've paid more in plaintiff's attorney's fees than the plaintiff received in the court, so those are, those are a concern of ours. The fact that you have the very first page in it, the (Inaudible) by eleven, that has examples, and these are examples of what we consider to be intentional acts. They come right from our claims system, it's a little descriptor that we have, so when I see, you know, what's going on in claims, this just gives you kind of a feel for what's going on, like you say, as opposed to purely accidents. Okay, so it's stuff that was intentionally done, you know, done for a good reason. The video that you're about to see, by the way, which, who you saw it in two thousand nine, we showed this in two thousand nine, you really studied, I'm a three caller, they're not (Inaudible) changed. It's still from the, uh, my home in heart in Colorado. Uh, we did put some Wisconsin stuff in it, the law hasn't changed. I've had about three hundred and twenty of our three hundred and eighty-five cities and villages see it at least one time. On some of the villages, I'm on third showing of that, which is a (Inaudible). New council members, they use it for courts and commissions, but it's, it's good information, it's just good information. I'll show the video, this little pamphlet, when you go through the video, you will see though, to help you remember, I guess, they put words up on the screen, don't worry about copying anything down, caption all those little words in here for your own, for you to remember, but again, even though it's Colorado, look past that, because there are differences in the Wisconsin long terms, how we treat some items, just a couple, I'll mention those at the end, but the information is still good because it applies to any governing body, just about any United States. So with that, Sherry, do you know how to, and Sherry, by the way, I'm, uh, it's with the, uh, Burke Art Mansfield Agency, and she's been your servicing agent, and they do an extra job.
The staff of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance Plan, want to thank you for taking the time to view this.
Yeah, can, can people hear that? Or should we...
Couldn't hear that all right?
Should we put a, um, speaker in front of it? I'm a (Inaudible).
Thank you.
You can have these back as I'm done. Feel like you're back in high school in the old days, and they couldn't get the projector going.
The old man.
Going off, now it's a computer.
The staff of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance Plan, want to thank you for taking the time to view this program. Risk management professionals in Wisconsin and other states agree that when we educate our public officials, we can help to avoid the conditions that lead to litigation. The Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency has authorized us to share with you a program which was prepared to help recognize circumstances that can create liability in cities and villages. These are universal to communities throughout the country. There may be a few differences in how important trade issues in Colorado and Wisconsin. We'll talk about those at the end of the program, but the lessons that we can all take from this program are common to all of us.
By the way, we don't insure Milwaukee, so you weren't part of that, so...
Congratulations on being elected as council member.
Thanks, mayor. I'm real excited about taking my first meeting, everything's going in. Although I'm a little nervous.
Nervous? So why, you were elected by landslide?
Well, there are several things I'd like to accomplish. Well, at the first event, I have a lot planned. I don't like it up like former councilman Smith. I want to have a successful turn, but I don't like that being sued.
And David, do you have time?
Hey, Bill.
Hi. I'm Robert Taylor. I've been a council member here in the city of Cottonwood for ten years, and mayor for the last two. During my time at the city, we have made a lot of progress, but also a few mistakes. Certain members of the council have created messy liability situations that have cost the city a great deal of money, hurt our public image, and stalled important projects. And in some situations, elected officials have paid personal liability claims out of your own pockets. The purpose of this video and accompanying handbook is to help you avoid the mistakes that can lead to liability and identify best practices that will allow you to be successful as an elected or appointed official.
That's a lot of good advice. Well, thanks, Bill. I'll see you tonight. Mayor, do you have a few minutes to discuss some of those past mistakes?
Sure, ten. Come on in. Have a seat.
You referred to council member Patrick Smith. He promised during his campaign he would never allow Mega Mart to build a store in Cottonwood, and he was pretty vocal about it.
(Inaudible) Mega Mart! (Inaudible) Mega Mart! I've had similar feelings about dragging others, although I think it was vocal, Mr. Smith. Where do you go wrong?
Well, I don't think he ever accepted the fact that as an individual council member, he really didn't have the authority to act on his own. That's why Smith was never able to get anything done. He was pretty vocal about the few issues he was interested in, but rarely worked to build consensus within the council. They do pretty much everything we do requires collaboration within the framework of our council, but elected officials can't get anything done as individuals.
I see your point.
So the first lesson is to think and act in terms of we, not I. Apart from a few duties vested in the mayor, the laws of government or city don't give any powers to individual council members. We've got a diverse council with a lot of different perspectives, and we can only accomplish our goals by working together. Now that you've been elected, your role changes dramatically. You're no longer an outsider promoting your own agenda. You now have to work with your fellow council members to accomplish the city's goals as a collective body.
What do you ask me more about council member Smith? Um, the Mega Mart deal, it was approved by the council, although by close vote, but what problems did Smith cause?
Remember all of his anti-Mega Mart statements? When it came time for us to actually hear and act on Mega Mart's land use application, he should have accused itself.
So he shouldn't have voted?
That's right. He shouldn't have participated in the hearing or voted. Smith had made it well known that he was aligned with the Mega Mart opponents, and were acting in a quasi judicial capacity, such as when deciding on a land use application or liquor license, he must be fair and impartial. We can't do that if we've already made up our minds before the hearing. Council member Smith had made it clear that he opposed the Mega Mart application. He was not acting as a fair and impartial decision maker. Fortunately, the Mega Mart application was approved by a small margin, otherwise the city could have been accused of a due process violation.
Due process?
Yes, the U.S. Constitution guarantees the right to a fair hearing as part of an applicant's due process rights.
During my campaign, I talked to a lot of my neighbors who are also anti-growth. I expressed my concerns about protecting our small businesses from giant retailers. Was that correct? Did you hear about similar issues?
Well, the question is, if one of those big retailers comes before the council with a land use application, can you be fair? Can you make your decision based only on the evidence you hear and the requirements of our land use code? And can you set aside your previous discussions with your neighbors?
I can't ignore my neighbors. They elected me to represent them, not ignore them.
I'm not saying ignore your neighbors, but when an application is pending, you should not have discussions with anyone outside of the hearing. Our city attorney calls these discussions ex parte contacts. Your decision in a quasi judicial matter must be based on the evidence presented, so when your neighbors want to say with you about pending application, explain to them it's inappropriate for you to talk about the issue outside the hearing. Suggest that they come to the hearing so their concerns can be heard.
Well, last year, I called councilman Miller and asked him to vote no on the pit bull ordinance. Did we engage in a proper ex parte contact?
No, that was a different situation. The council's consideration of a pit bull ordinance was a legislative matter, they were not dealing with the rights of a specific applicant under an existing law. The council was considering a new citywide law, so they were acting as legislators. Lobbying and other ex parte contacts are acceptable in a legislative context, but when you're in a quasi judicial role, you've got to think and act more like a judge and refrain from engaging in or allowing ex parte contacts.
It makes sense when you put it that way. It's important not to base my vote on my biases or prejudices, and only consider the evidence presented at the hearing like a judge.
Exactly. The other thing to keep in mind is to make sure you have no conflicts of interest when you're voting. If you are appearing before a judge and you learn we had financial or other conflicts of interest, you'd expect him to recuse himself, wouldn't you?
Well, sure.
Well, people who appear before us in a quasi judicial manner, it's not the same. To be unbiased decision makers, we must be free from conflicts of interest. If we do have a conflict, we need to declare it, recuse ourselves, and not participate in the hearing or decision.
I think I understand. I recall reading in the paper about another incident involving Patrick Smith.
Oh, that was probably the lawsuit involving our library expansion. The council had selected a very qualified contractor to manage the project. Smith was always hanging around the construction site, thinking it was his job to micro-manage the project. He was a saint. Smith ended up in a verbal confrontation with the contractor. Things got personal, and Smith started talking to other council members about terminating the guy's contract. He also spread some vicious personal rumors around town about the contractor.
That was very funny. Did he get the contractor fired?
No, but the contractor sued Smith personally for defamation. Our insurance company declined to defend Smith because it was alleged he was acting outside the scope of his authorized duties and acting in a willful and wanted manner.
So that's why Smith had the papers in a legal defense?
Yes, he was not acting within the scope of his authority as a council member when he started those vicious rumors. I heard he had to take a second mortgage to pay his lawyers and a bar settlement. Smith learned his lesson the hard way. Being outside the scope of one's authority or acting in a willful and wanted manner will result in a loss of liability protection and a discharge capital.
That's good, thank you.
Now, Patrick Smith isn't the only elected official who's gotten himself in some trouble. Our former mayor, Joe Appleby, put himself in the middle of a personnel issue.
I think I remember this case. Tammy Williams was the director of public works, right? Didn't she try to stop sexual harassment in the street to me?
What do you think about her and something like that to her?
(Inaudible).
Guys, I told you about this before, we can't keep doing this. Bert, I need to see him right now.
In order to clean up the division, she fired the street supervisor, Herb Simpson. Mayor Appleby, who was drinking by his (Inaudible), was furious and made it his mission to get Tammy fired, and he succeeded.
You know, your job can't be replaced.
She brought a lawsuit claiming the mayor retaliated against her for trying to eliminate the harassment. The jury awarded her one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in punitive damages that Appleby had to pay out of his own pocket.
Wow. What were the key lessons of this case?
First, don't act on the basis of personal notice. It was obvious Mayor Appleby wanted to fire Tammy Williams to get revenge for his friend Bert, and that was not in the scope of his authority. Second, we need to delegate personnel issues to the city administration. The council shouldn't be dealing with individual employees other than those who report directly to the council, like our city administrator. We should be focusing on major legislative, quasi judicial issues, and leave administrator out of staff. And third, never retaliate against someone for exercising their legal rights. Not only is retaliation against the law, but these claims are among the most difficult and costly to defend. We also had another fallout from the Appleby litigation. The press firm during the trial, that Appleby was telling a lot of inappropriate jokes, and he was emailing them to the entire council, so the media demanded to see all of the council's emails over several years. Our study sure looked bad after the press got ahold of those.
Well, I didn't realize emails were considered public records.
Sure. While there are rows, for not releasing them under some circumstances, the basic rule is that emails may be public documents that anyone can review. If you don't want something splashed on the front page of the newspaper, we need to keep it out of our evidence.
At least for how they always said in making these mistakes. Remember the scandal involving councilman Arnold over in Clarksville after he got stopped for his behavior?
Yes, he was caught on television yelling at the police officer for stalking him. My Crain and Trudy shouted at the officer, "Don't you know what I am?" Talk about abuse of power. And that brings me to perhaps the most important lesson. As elected and appointed officials, we must use our powers wisely and with civility. To misuse our position is absolutely improper and is not within the scope of our authority. We shouldn't try to put ourselves above the law or try to get some sort of special privilege because of our position.
Well, explain what you mean by "accusable."
Well, as elected officials, we're the city's most powerful positions in the city. Because of that perception, our words carry a lot of weight. A harsh or ill-considered comment from any of us, especially in the public, can be extremely harmful to our employees' morale as well as our public image. I once heard Appleby refer to our female employees as "staff highs." It was embarrassing. Also, we should not participate in or encourage staff bashing in public meetings. We need to keep the focus on issues, not personalities. And then during Tammy's lawsuit, some of the jokes the mayor told during executive sessions were made public, which were another bashing in the press for those. Negative behavior like that can affect our entire organization. If we set a bad example at the top, we can be surprised when it filters through the entire workforce. I'm so glad we moved on from those days.
This is eye-opening and a little frightening. Do we have any protection for liability?
Yes, fortunately, we live in a state where our liability protections are strong. For one thing, we have an excellent governmental immunity act. Our public official's liability handbook has a good summary of our liability protections, but to retain these protections, we must stay within the scope of our authority and not act in a willful and wanted manner.
You used those terms before, what would be considered willful and wanted?
Well, the actual legal definition is found in the handbook, but basically, it's the kind of conduct that got Appleby in trouble. When he got Tammy fired, he was more than reckless in disregarding her legal rights, purposely trying to damage her career.
Do we have any other protection?
Sure, we have excellent personal immunity. Sure, we have excellent personal immunity, recognized by our courts when acting on legislative and quasi judicial matters. But we do not have strong immunity when dealing with administrative problems. That's another reason why we need to stay out of administrative issues.
Got it. Let the city manager give us the job.
And finally, we've got good insurance coverage. Our coverage only applies when we act within the scope of our authorized responsibilities and does not apply to punitive damages, as Mayor Appleby learned.
Does he have any all-inclusive best practices, liability protections, and insurance coverages? And each area calls for us to meet certain standards of conduct. As long as we meet those standards of conduct, we should be okay.
I think you got it, Dan.
Thanks, Mayor. I really appreciate you taking the time to share your knowledge, so I don't have to learn the hard way. Thanks for your insight.
You're very welcome. And one of the other best practices we put into place is liability training. We have a session every year for our councilmembers, boards, and commissioners. We have a session scheduled next month.
Great, I'll do that. Great. Thanks for getting there.
Dan's a sharp guy. I think he'll make an excellent health advocate as long as he follows these best practices. Think and act in terms of "we," not "I." When acting in a quasi judicial capacity, be fair and impartial. Don't pick up your line before the hearing. Base your decision on the evidence you hear at the hearing and the applicable law. Don't participate in the hearing or the decision if you have a conflict of interest, and don't engage in ex parte contacts. Refrain from personal or retaliatory actions. Focus on key legislative and quasi judicial issues and leave administrative matters to the staff. And maximize your liability protections by staying within the scope of your authority and avoiding willful and wanted conduct. I hope this video has helped you identify how to stay within the scope of your authority as an elected or appointed official, maximize your liability protections, and enhance your effectiveness as a civic leader. Good luck.
Give me turn around. Hey, I like how she puts the challenge at the end of that "good luck." I've been involved with the Leaks program going back to 1983, and there is a claim out there that I haven't seen happen in Wisconsin. And when I look over the years in terms of the large claims that we've had, all of them, all of them have been obviously intentional acts, which we've been able to report on. Our 10 largest claims we've had, the Leaks Insurance Program, of the 10, four of them have been land use issues, and all of the projects started before 2008. And this video, by the way, which was finished in 2008, I'm kind of wondering, given the great session that happened local to happen, if the video had been done in 2010, 10, or 11, I don't know, probably would have been higher player situations. But in those situations, our two largest claims in particular, both of them with the city of Lake Geneva, it's all public information, not saying anything else to it. Each of them was just a little over $2.5 million that ended up being. And we just had a forum last week in Lake Geneva where 100 counterparts to myself from across the country had a convention in Lake Geneva, and I had the attorney speaking for that about the land use issues that we ran into and what was in the lake in terms of trying to defend. We had five or six different law firms involved because of conflicts of interest. And this, I don't know if you recall it or not, but made the newspapers because in the Wisconsin Constitution, "Mayor, do you realize you can fire your alders?" Nobody had ever done that in the Lake Geneva sort of thing. And it was, it was just a ton of mess. And we eventually did pay the claims in mediation. They were seeking originally $156 million. And if any of you have been on Lake Geneva, you see the kind of money that's involved down there in the town of Lynn. I mean, it's unbelievable. I don't see you as sitting older people with computers. Do you have city computers that you use for your city business?
No, we don't.
Bad. Number two, do you at least use city email system? So you answer and you send?
Not everyone does.
Well, in this case, that didn't happen either, and the sheriff's deputies will come and take your computers when there's issues. And you may get them back within a week, you may get them back within six months, six months. They took the computer from the HR director from Rex Nord in Milwaukee. And this thing, it was, it's something they could make movies out of, this thing. Talk about this, it's so much money. One of the alders had gone to Best Buy and asked, "How do I delete these, like, most burn? How do I delete emails from my hard drive because I'm going to get a new computer?" And they told him, "Oh, and you never can be sure." So the guy said, "The only way you can really do it is to physically destroy it." So a neighbor, and this is after a court order to not destroy any emails, he wailed away on his hard drive with a sledgehammer after supposedly everything had been copied from another one. And when you start getting smoking guns like this, it's tough to go in front of a jury and say, "Oh, you know, there's nothing going on." The personnel actions that we've had, most of the personnel actions, we've had bad. We've had decisions made that we didn't have a record to back up or why the decision was made. And then on top of that, the witnesses we had, the supervisory people, did not make good witnesses. And that's why I'd say we lost those two big ones. We have had three very large police claims, and Chief, you may have heard of the one in Mecklenburg where we put up, we thought was a spitwood over a guy's head, it was a pile hazard wood. And this is right after 9/11, two years after 9/11, and there was a lot of equipment at the Homeland Security. The officers, three different departments, arresting a person for gas driving, sort of making up. He was, and everything was right, they had it on camera from the video camera, the dash and all that, but they thought they were putting a spitwood on the guy, because officers are obviously in the central trial. They didn't connect the reading apparatus, so they took him to the station. He was dead. Very unfortunate situation. Everything in that. And when you go backwards, there's always something that, and this is in any large law. It doesn't matter what it is, whether there's insurance involved or not. You take the collapse of Bridge I-35 in Miami, a little ground, ground is a rusted way, or whatever they call those things, holding, holding. Nobody, nobody was expecting that, expected it to happen. In this particular case, the two officers for the Mecklenburg were supposed to have attended the training course on the use of this wood. They were checked in as having been present from the government, sort of thing. So you come up with, you know, the different banks up there, it's just up to them. We, we do have very good insurance protections. I don't want to scare you, but everyone is happy that people serve, because, you know, you're getting paid big bucks, I realize that, so, for sitting here with all your time and that. But we do have good protections. And what I wonder, real briefly, is the next thing in your hand, it says, State of Wisconsin, and this, five, or four different statutes, I'm sorry, five different statutes. And real, real briefly, I'm not going to go over this in detail by any means. The first statute, 895.46, is really your insurance policy. I say "your." It's for you as individual members, sitting here as a council, it's for supervisors, it's for the employees, it's for the committee people that serve, you know, on the various city committees. And what this says, you don't have to go too far. In the very first paragraph, it says, "If you are served either as an individual or in your capacity in working for the city or serving on a board, you will be defended and the city will pay any judgments." And there really aren't, even there are exclusions. What the Leakey municipality directors tell me, and it shows who my directors are, you know, on the blue line on the letterhead, they said, "Try to come as close as you can in meeting what our obligation is under here. There's no insurance policy that doesn't have some exclusions or some limitations." I pride myself in having a very good policy on board, the one that's ensuring you and the almost 400 other communities, and it works pretty well. But it does say in here, just like in the movie, that you have to be acting, it says, within the scope of employment or the scope of your duties in the position that you're serving, serving. And that is the caveat that we look for when we're adjusting claims. They're talking about whistleblowing, sorry, not a whistleblower, a retribution thing. We had one of those, that the individual thought that he was, he was being singled out after he had made a recommendation, and he was impressed with it, and we eventually won the claim, but that's $185,000 later defense cost. And when you think of the mental energy and the time that it takes away from city business and just personal time. This other one is talking about Lake Geneva, that thing dragged on for four years, sort of thing, and it's, it's just something, something to want to be involved. So anyway, that's, this is really your insurance policy. Yes, we are the ones that hire the attorneys, we've got the same law firms for close to 14 years now, it's worked very well. We see of all 800 liability claims here, we see about 1,000 worked on, I insure you worked on, and the liability and the physical damage to your vehicles, not the buildings, that's a different program. We go to the second page, 893.80, I'll file a claim, and it says a $50,000 limitation. Let me tell you, you do not want to get hurt in the state of Wisconsin by a governmental entity, whether that's a colony, city, and I'm talking to you personally, family people. Other than auto, $50,000 is a max per person. And that's for pain and suffering, loss of wages, medicals, doesn't matter. If it's a minor, the minor has their own cause of action, the parents may have a separate, so you might get up to $500,000, but it's minimal. And so the left-hand side here talks about how to file a claim. And you maybe remember the old saying, "The king can do no wrong," or "You can't fight City Hall." It isn't quite like that, but there's still recipes out there. If people don't follow this recipe in terms of bringing a claim, we will get it thrown out in court, and we're very successful at doing it, and our attorneys are very good. Courts do not take time into people that don't do their homework and file a claim the way they're supposed to. And it's not up to you to file a claim on behalf of someone. I'll get into that in just a little bit, in terms of why we tell you to deny some claims because it's maybe discretionary immunity or they have statutory limits that they just fail to see, whether it's the notice or whatever. But on the right-hand side, paragraph three, that's where it talks about the $50,000 limit, and says that's involved unless there's a limit somewhere else. And it talks about judicial, quasi judicial down there. Like I think you said, those are big words, but really what it means is, if you're doing something legislative, if you're acting on a piece of business before you that affects everyone in the community, you have immunity for that. Doesn't stop people from suing you, you know, we'll defend it, that, we'll win, sort of thing. A good attorney's not going to even take the case, they're not going to get any money off it. Where we run into the problems is where it gets into the ministerial duties that you have as a city versus the discretionary communities that we may have. And that happens when you're dealing with an individual. So if I were an individual trying to plead for you to give me my liquor license back, sort of thing, and I followed, filed the forms and all that, you're dealing with me as an individual, you're dealing with just that one application that's in front of you, as opposed to, like they said, legislation that's going to affect pitfalls for the community as a whole, sort of thing. So two different things. Another example I use is stop signs. Let's say the people sitting here said, "Well, we need another stop sign at Temple and Quinn," or whatever, kids are going to get hurt, people are racing through it. And you say, "No, 400 stop signs in a community our size is enough, not put another one in." That's a legislative decision. Next week, somebody gets killed, they can't bring suit. But if you put that stop sign in, you now have a ministerial duty to make sure that it needs it. So that's why your signage program, either through Public Works or the officers over there, they're doing their own, is there, are the signs that are supposed to be, because people come to rely on them. Same thing with sewer backups. You have a legislative decision in terms of whether or not you're going to extend a sewer project, how big the pipes can be, what you can afford, those are all legislative decisions, immunity for that. However, once you put that system in, you have to maintain it, and now we're into a ministerial duty. If you're maintaining it, follow your maintenance program, and a blockage happens. Let's say someone flushes a hamper down, blows up in the back, which we have a little bit, and it backs the sewage up into two or three other people's basements, that's not your fault. It's not the homeowner's fault, it's nobody's fault. That's why you have coverage under your homeowners, or it should be there. So when we get those claims in, tell you to deny them, because you followed the maintenance plan you had. Now, if you didn't follow the maintenance plan or you can't prove it, that's generally when we're going to end up paying. Do you have no fault sewer coverage, Sheriff? Can't remember if you were not anybody, no? Okay. We will pay those type of claims under a separate endorsement at about 40% of our insurance purchase, you included, and, but the limitation is only $500 per occurrence, so regardless of how many homes are flooded. We had in Bayside back in 2008, Big Greens, we had 980 city homes had sewage backed up in, and we had $100,000 for that one. Yeah, so, I'm sure it's a hard part of that. A separate limit in the statutes is motor vehicles. Motor vehicles used to be unlimited when the legislature made changes to the other-than-auto point of $25,000 to $50,000 max per person. They took auto from unlimited damage back to 250,000. So if you're involved in a car accident and there's damages to multiple people, you are not going to see the multimillion dollar awards you read about in newspapers, it just doesn't happen. Quarter million. If you're using your personal vehicle on city, on city business, let's say you're going down to a meeting in Madison, or not just driving to a prom, it has to be, that's no different than work, you're going to a prom at your workplace. But if you're on city business, using your personal vehicle, and your limits are inadequate or your policy expired, we again would cover excess of that because you're on city business. So we'd take care of it, either inadequate or not to the other. Next one, 893.83, and I just love this statute, and the, my counterparts in other states. I tell them, okay, we live in Wisconsin, we have this thing called snow and ice up here. If you look at four lines down, you have three weeks to get rid of snow and ice off of streets, sidewalks, and public parking lots. So if you're looking to save money, budget, to fall at most every 20 days, once every 20 days. I'm not saying people are going to be happy, but if something happens, I mean, literally, we've got immunity in this whole. And when you get a new snow or a new ice fall, we get a new three-week period. So it's, it's statute. Now, you probably have a city ordinance that says property owners have to clear it within, what, 24 hours, 48? That has nothing to do, nothing to do with neighborhood checks. If it's a city sidewalk, it's your property and it's your obligation to maintain it. The fact that the one-eight property owner didn't maintain it does not affect the liability And finally, recreational immunity. I know there's a pool discussion coming up here. I absolutely love beaches, pools, skateboard parks. I like the fun playground equipment we used to have before they quit paddle in. They asked me how I feel about our playground equipment. But anyway, we have never paid a claim in the 30 years for playground management, ever. We've got suits, but we have one of the strongest recreational immunity statutes in the country. So while we always want people to make good decisions, looking out for safety, if something happens, don't be worried, as an example, if you put a one in a three-year board in, oh my God, you might get sued. It's like, yes, you probably will get sued, but we have, we have a minimum for those suits. I don't want people to get hurt, but on the other hand... I don't want people to get hurt, but on the other hand, I do think there has to be a little more risk in our playground equipment than what we don't, 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 that's my personal feelings. Questions before I move on real quickly about claims? Anything? I throw a lot at you, so. Just real briefly, when you do have a claim, it will get submitted to us, whether it's an auto claim or a general liability claim, I'm not talking, we're not at all, I know that's handled separately or differently, but we will investigate the claim, assuming it's not an incident only and a full contact, people, or something, sort of thing, but we'll investigate the claim, and if we believe there's negligence, we'll try to get a fair settlement within the statutory protections act. If we feel either there was no negligence, or there was negligence, but we have discretionary immunity, because we can be negligent and still not have to pay that, it's what the government has given us, our legislators have put into the law. There's a provision in the law that says you have to deny the claim in your council. And if you deny the claim in council, we would recommend it, tell you to please do it at your next meeting. We're not shirking our duties. The reason we do that is, if you deny the claim, that starts a six-month statute of limitations running for the people to bring a lawsuit. And if they don't bring it within six months, they're forever barred. Now, in the insurance liability world, to be able to get a claim moving that quickly through the courts is just cold. People's memories are fresh, we know it, it takes care of what truly are the real claims versus those that they're going to lay in the weeds and hope that the people are gone, whatever, but that's why we have you deny it, because if I, as the insurance company deny the claim, then it's just the ordinary statute of limitations running, which are generally six years for property damage and two years, give or take, depending on circumstances, for a bodily injury, to bring the claim, so. With that, making pools stuff, I may have to sit around for years, I suppose, I guess it could be more interesting, but anyway, good, good luck with it. And you have my phone number, email, and all that on the bottom of the, letterhead pieces, if anybody has questions, please, please, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We will move on to the street. We'll talk about the water project. And one way I can discuss, definitely, is your community's presentation. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to share this. I also want to say thank you to my former neighbor, Mrs. Murphy, for sharing her opinion, but she did share her opinion with me several weeks ago. What I'd like to mention, and just a quick neighbor, is my backyard on Main Street was no deeper from where I'm standing to where Peggy and me live. And I was about three blocks from the, our yard pool.
It's hard to hear back here.
My yard was very, very small, from about here to the back of the room, and I was three blocks from the pool, and my kids loved the pool, they spent a lot of time at the pool. My neighbor on the other side, when we moved in, said, oh my gosh, you have two dogs and six kids, why do you want to anybody yarding? And I said, I don't need a big yard, I got a, a yard couple blocks back, and I don't have to mow it. And so we spent a lot of time using the park. I would like to say that her concerns over funding is completely valid, and should definitely be addressed, but there is money out there, there's a lot of money out there, it just takes the right type of work to go seek that money. And addressing any concerns regarding dedicating something in somebody's memory, this is a practice that's done every day across the nation. Sometimes it's nice to put a little personal touch on a situation, to get people excited, to perhaps bring in income opportunities. For example, my presentation is going to be based on a facility that focuses on, on heart health, which I think would probably affect the majority of the people in this room. But to look beyond it as one particular person, although to have an inspiration behind it, I think is very important. And if you look at the pool now, there's nothing on the outside of the building, it's not dedicated to anybody, there isn't any signage, it's been as well-maintained as it possibly can be with the monies that it's had, but it is time, its time is over. And I think that, you know, putting some effort into it and to bring it back would be of great benefit to everybody. In some of my research, I did find out that they say that a standalone aquatic facility cannot sustain itself unless it has about a, a community of 30,000 people around it. Well, you look at Clintonville, we don't have that, but we do have in our surrounding communities, including our own, 28,000 people, and I think that that's enough. I think that we don't need that extra couple thousand people, I think we could do that on our own. So I have a video that I want to share with you, because I want you to get to know Jason Dickman a little bit, maybe you would get an idea of the person that I knew. He wasn't a best friend of mine, he wasn't even a super-good friend of mine, but he was a friend of mine, and I, I did meet him at the pool in 2007, and have gotten to learn his family, to love his family over the years, between things at school and at the pool. So enjoy this first video, I'm sorry, it's a little slow, and then after that, I'll kind of go into just some ideas, just to kind of put some things out there. Okay. So what I am suggesting that you consider is to turn Clintonville musical swimming pool into the Dickman Memorial Community Pool, and put a heart-healthy spin on it. I don't know if a lot of people know how the pool started, but there were a handful of children that, that died, they drowned while they were swimming in the river, and so a bunch of people got together and they raised money to open the pool and give everybody a safe place to swim in the community. And so, you know, there are ways that these things can be done. We do have good things at our pool, we have diving boards, we have wading pools, we employ a dozen, there are swimming classes, private party rentals are also available, and it is adjacent to Buchholz Park, which is 20 acres in size. Not-so-cool facts, revenue last year was just under 13,000, but expenditures reached Revenue as of July 25th of this year was, is 6,597, we've got quite a bit more into it the last few weeks, but you can kind of see the trend. A revenue budget of only 14,000 kind of poses somewhat of a red flag there, but this is something that has been going on for quite some time, and the city has been willing to absorb those losses at the sake of, of providing this community water feature, which is very common, and in municipalities that do have community swimming pools, it is very common that they don't make any money, but they do put value to the community, and that's something definitely worth considering. The last renovation as well was in 1986. Some interesting facts, a submerged person weighs less. Up to 90% of their weight is supported by water. Swimming 30 minutes a day can reduce coronary, coronary heart disease in, in women specifically, up to 40%. Swimming also produces a natural high by releasing endorphins, relaxing the body similar to yoga, and research shows swimming can change the brain for the better by replacing cells lost through stress. I think we shall go swimming. Healthy hearts do swim. Swimming works the heart and lungs, training the body to use oxygen more efficiently. This is one of the reasons why Jason spent so much time at the pool, it was an activity that he could do, and it was an activity that continued to help his own health. Swimming can improve high blood pressure, cholesterol levels even, and strengthens the heart. We've got a couple of sources there. Other health benefits, including water supporting and cushioning the body, reduce chance for injury, great for arthritis, stress, insulin sensitivity, weight control, combating muscle and back pain, pregnancy health, improving self-esteem, and overall well-being. It also increases muscular strength, tone and range of motion, and can reduce asthma symptoms, and can reduce death rates in males, beating out runners. Other facilities that we could look at as far as, you know, inspiration and examples would be the Resh and the Joannys Aquatic Centers in Green Bay. They have a zero-depth pool entry, two water slides, divers, whirlcove, a wading pool, a sand play area, full-service concession. And what you're, what you're going to see here is a common thread of full-service concessions. In reports that have been released as far as income coming in for, from municipal pools, admission alone cannot sustain a facility. A big portion of their money comes from full-service concessions. They have locker rooms, lounge chairs, their daily admission ranges from $2.50 to $5 per day, with passes from $45 to $174, based on family size and residency. New this year, the pool also has computerized key fobs. And there's a picture of the Resh. Another facility is the Mead Pool in Appleton, they also have zero entry, splash pad, sand play area, water slide, full-service concessions, diving lounge chairs, and sand volleyball. And there's a picture of that one. The Nina Pool, a little bit smaller, a smaller community, they also have zero-depth entry, it's heated, they have water play features, concessions, outdoor ping pong, sand play area and wading pool, tetherball on waterside, their admission is free to $4, I believe it's, under two is free, and a season pass is free to $200, depending on family size and residency. Little bit from the Nina Pool. Another facility, Doyle Pool in Little Shute, which is probably the closest to what we have here, but they also have a waterside. have here, but they also have a waterside, concessions, diving lounge chairs, admission free to $3, also similar, you know, under certain ages free, passes free to $156 depending on family size and residency. And a way that they make a lot of money to help support their pool is they sponsor fun community summer soaker events. And so, what they do is they have like grandparents' days. So, all the grandparents come and you, you know, have lunch, you pay a fee, you have fun and you swim, and everybody has a good time and the pool makes some money. They have things like super soaker days where everybody can bring in their super soakers and shoot everybody with water guns and all sorts of things like that. And I think that's a good way too of, you know, boosting a sense of community. Some ideas for the Clintonville Pool could be Jason Love cannonballs, so perhaps like a cannonball corner or diving area, splash pad or wading pool for tots. This was presented at the Park and Rec Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it was discussed perhaps not having a wading pool and having a zero entry that enabled the entire swim area to be supervised. And I think that's a good idea because currently the wading pool...
Has no lifeguards. Sorry. They have no lifeguards over there.
The zero entry would meet ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act requirements, which I think if we could get more of our older generation in the pool, they would come to the pool. Right now, it's very difficult for many of them. Heart-healthy concessions, I think this is one of the most important things. I think the, all the concessions should be heart-healthy, and even our yummier, higher-fat virgins could be toned down. I think families would be more opt to bring their kids for the date and eat a meal there and also feel confident knowing that when their kids are there without them, they're eating something besides an ice cream bar or nothing at all. I think that that is really huge right there. A dedicated dining space like what you would see at the Resh would be appropriate with fixed chairs and tables. And another thing that could be unique would be heart-healthy self-paced interactive activity centers. It could be something as simple as signage, you know, over here, swim 10 laps, raise your heart rate to, you know, whatever, and this happens. There are companies that make different interactive things. There are companies out there that will custom-design slides. And how cool would it be to have a slide that was maybe red and blue and was in the shape to resemble a vein? That would be pretty interesting. If anybody's been in the children's museum in Appleton a number of years ago, I don't know, they still have it, they had a heart exhibit there, and they even had like a big heart that kids could climb into and have little slide and lots of little interactive things that they could do. Of course, update the pool house, you know, and basic pool functions, add some type of a water feature, you know, slide, mushroom, something that doesn't say, "Please don't let your kids climb on porpoise." I'm thinking that might be a pun because all the kids climb the porpoise on porpoise. And I think we should think about lounge chairs, audio cameras, that sort of thing. Now, where would we get the money for this? Because it seems to be that there's a project cost of barely bringing the pool up to where it is now, but in a functioning manner of about $200,000 to a new facility that could top $1 million. Well, the name of the game here is writing grants. And of course, donations, fundraising, and perhaps a little bit from the rec building budget, but based off of what's in there would never suggest exhausting monies from that. There are different grants available out there that do give money specifically for pools and outdoor recreation. These are some of them. I've also provided Justin with further details on the criteria for some of these grants. Some of these grants are several years out, and that's why it's important to start planning. Some of the grants will cover up to 75% of the entire project. So, if you're looking at a million-dollar project and you only have to come up with $300,000, I think that makes things a whole lot more appealing. So, we've got ones that range from $500 up into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Generating pool income once we have a pool, a new pool, is important because, as the gentleman said before, once you make the commitment to have something like that, you also make the commitment to maintain it. And so, that's important to consider. Of course, we have admission and season passes, swim lessons, seeking ongoing donations and grants for improvement, pay to attend community pool parties, super soaker day, grandparents' day, schools out, back to school, that sort of thing. And promote private pool rentals for parties. I don't think a lot of the community know that they can rent the pool right now, although it's for a very small window of time. But it is somewhat, you know, affordable, and it would be fun for kids to do, and I think we should have more of that. But I think the majority of the money could come as far as making this a destination, making this a tourism-type piece in our community. And offer opportunities for field trips for schools, churches, daycares, clubs, where they could come in, they can do the self-paced activities, they can eat a heart-healthy lunch perhaps. There's a box lunch program put together. They get a certain amount. And kind of make it a fun day and learning as well. And I think that with a per-child cost, I think you could see a lot of money come in and could use the pool efficiently during its downtime. And most importantly would be to brand the pool. There is not a pool of this nature anywhere in northeast Wisconsin, and I could not find one anywhere outside of our region as well that is tying heart health or any type of specific type of purpose above and beyond just being a fun place to play. And I think that, I think that the people here in Clintonville can take that to a higher level. So, all I'm here today to do is to plant the seed. There has not been any exploration of grants up to this point. There hasn't been anybody that has come forward with any ideas. There hasn't been a long-term vision except for the general consensus is that people like the outdoor pool. I know in that letter it was mentioned about that we have a pool and combining facilities, but there is a big difference between the environment of an outdoor pool and an indoor pool. But looking beyond that, I think it would be a financial disaster in trying to combine sharing the costs between a facility that would be run by the city as well as the school. I've seen enough where the school has to share expenses between the two departments of the rec center, and it can become very tricky determining whose electricity cost or whose staffing cost, who's using what at what times. And they've done a good job, but I don't think that throwing another entity in there would be a wise thing to do. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Stephanie, for doing all this research. And as you said, you've started working on, looking at the grant stuff.
One last thing is, if you want the grant money, you have to design the pool to get the grants. So, you have to identify the grants that you want that pay the most money and say, "What do they want? What do we have to do so they give us the money that we need?" And then, that's incorporated right into the design from the very beginning. So, you're not trying to retrofit an idea with where the money is coming from.
Thank you again. Okay. Move on to the sidewalk and concrete maintenance work. Rose, Ron, and Ron, your desk. Toby, could I have explained how this is going with the sidewalk, street repair?
So far, we have, we just had two bidders. One was Al Dix Construction, I believe, and the other was Jill Fisher. And Mary Norden, Norden and Associates, put together, I don't want to say it generic, but an estimated amount of sidewalk replacement, curb and gutter replacement, some small catch basin repairs, and some asphalt patches in the streets. So, that each bidder would give us a unit price. And right now, the low bid came in and was checked over by Norden's, and the low bidder was Al Dix Construction for $97,898.55.
Mary, I just have a question. Are these, are these mobile by any cans or...Toby?
Not in the immediate area.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you. Any other council questions? Greg?
Another question for you, Toby. Both of these bidders, have they, are they, I guess the best word would be betted? Are they of, you know, proven abilities to do this work?
Yes. Al Dix is relatively known within this profession for, I don't know, exactly how many years. He also has informed us at the bid opening that he has hired, I believe, a few long-time employees at Quality Concrete, which was a past contractor that Clintonville used. So, he's bonded and insured and, and I guess this will be his first time working at Clintonville, but...
Thank you, Greg.
Well, I know that we've worked with Quality Concrete before, and they've done work here over the years and enthusiasm. I don't, I don't have any cause for concern there, so I'd be willing to make the motion to accept the low bid of Al Dix Construction for $97,898.55.
Second, motion by Rose, second by Keister to accept the low bid of Al Dix for $97,898.55. Any discussion? Don?
We're hoping to suspect on that concrete six peg. Anyone going to be testing it for air content?
Again, it's a $4,000 PSI.
Is that three-way, two-way, straight cement or what?
I believe it doesn't say anything in here about not using fly out. It won't be a straight cement.
Or slag, what can you use, slag, fly out?
When he comes to town, we can find that out.
You know, slag is like making baloney, like I say. It's not hydraulic. That's how slag does with cement. You gotta know what you're getting for your money.
Yep. I know it'll be in $4,000 PSI for outdoor concrete, and we'll be watching him hopefully. I mean, obviously, if he doesn't have his own ready mix trucks, it'll either be coming from a local MCC or a place outside of Jillis Cement, which I feel they should be proven.
I hope the concrete discussing for air because that is the fact that coming down the road, obviously, higher than wall.
I understand. I don't use your sidewalks, curb and gutter, which isn't a upgrade. So, we'll have to look on.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, roll call, please. Snyder?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Schli?
Yes.
Darnett?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine zero. We'll move on to item number seven.
I just had a question on our advertising budget. In the past, as I understand it, we had a budget and we advertised in the paper of record, and it would point out to me that we're now advertising in both papers. Is that budgeted? Were we budgeted for both papers?
There are some things that need to go in both papers, like the voting notices.
No, not voting notices. Okay. I'm trying to, I'm just trying to, we've done bold. I just understood that in the past, they'd only get a month.
Okay. Jamie?
Yes.
Would you?
Yes.
The federal library, does their whole advertising, they pay for bill?
I don't think it was, it wasn't that. I think it was employment notices. Thank you. Just question if it was budgeted, if it was budgeted or not. Thank you.
Anything else on that?
Okay, was it?
Then we will move on for the police and fire commission to declare the 2001 Ford Force surplus, and they would like to have a vote on that, and that would be advertised in the Wisconsin surplus. And... I'll move. Here. Motion. Second by Keister, second by Dunleavy to declare the 2001 Ford Force surplus for the police and fire community. Any discussion? All in favor, I? I propose motion carried. We will move on to the finance and insurance committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance and insurance committee are recommending approval of the reports, payment of the bills in the amount of $1,519,620.48.
Motion by Darnett, second by Schli to pay the bills in the amount of $1,519,620.48. Any discussion? Go call. Rose?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Schli?
Yes.
Darnett?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine zero.
I think, Mayor, nine B, we include the licenses, which would include the operators as presented on page 45, and also request for free permits or licenses, that is a reserve Class B beer for the Clintonville Curling Club Incorporated, 65 Sixth Street, Agent Mark Pregnance, and also the temporary Class B beer, St. Rose Parish at 140 Auto Street for September 13, 2014. And lastly, the music event license for St. Rose Parish, 140 Auto Street for the same date, September 13, 2014, and recommend their approval also.
Motion by Darnett, second by Schli to approve the operator's license for Class B beer for the Curling Club, the temporary Class B beer for St. Rose Parish, and the music event for St. Rose Parish. Any discussion?
Mayor, I had a call from, it wasn't actually one of my constituents, she lived on Clinton Avenue, but it was during the... but it was during the fireman's festival. I was sleeping, so it was, I couldn't hear anything in my house, but it was, she was complaining that she couldn't sleep and it was noise. I know it was after midnight. My just question, I couldn't answer her, how late can the music go on these music permits? Is there?
Rose? Pardon? Jim?
That's what I thought, well, okay, I, I think the call, I heard on my phone, but I wanted to call the lady back. She did leave her name, but I just wanted to check that so I knew in the future if anybody asks. Okay, thank you.
The thing is, it may be confusing, is that you might be confusing the ordinance for loud and unnecessary noise, and then there may be also provision in that permit that specifically gives them a variance to that, to the midnight hour.
I think, I think she was just, I think it was just that, just that noise that she was calling about. As I said, I was, I was sleeping, so I didn't know exactly, but I know the, the late night show with Seth Meyers was on when I went to bed, so that's midnight, so it was after that, so, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion carried.
Nine C, Mayor, the chief of the fire department presented a report of some capital expenses that needed, if you recall, I believe last month, we talked about the brush truck, a possible grant included in your, supplemental information packet is the official notice from the, from FEMA that we were successfully getting that grant as we suspected, so we've already approved that money, that's great. This was a follow-up for, the follow-up, the other things that we've got more information on that included lockers for drying, the turnout gear, these stateless uniforms, it is turnout gear itself, as well as cagers. And the police and fire commission recommending its approval. They are asking that the chief of fire department look for a cheaper alternative gear available for the drying of your gear. It's called a locker, but it's really a grid system that allows the air to go through to properly dry the gear and blocks line. The finance insurance committee is recommending approval of that capital expense, so I'll make a motion that the, we allot thirty-eight thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-seven cents from two thousand fifteen capital for the purchase of these items. And it does include the gear lockers, but the chief is going to, if he can get a cheaper option, but up to that.
Okay, motion by Dornet, second by Schli to approve the capital expense in the amount of three hundred, excuse me, thirty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Six hundred and seventeen.
Seventy-seven. Out of the two thousand fifteen capital budget. Any discussion, Mary Beth?
Another question. I understand from the, at the meeting of the police and fire commission and from the, the towns that were there, particularly Lynn Gibson, had said that they, they were concerned that this was a budgeted item and that they hadn't been notified of this, and they were told at the meeting that they wouldn't have to pay the money. The city administrator told them that they, she would pay it out of our two thousand fifteen budget, and then they could pay it, so, well, has there any, has there been any discussion with them? Are the towns going to pay their share?
I haven't been at the, wasn't at the last meeting. I wanted to check what, pardon, do you have any?
I did talk with the town chair from Bear Creek today, he's in full support of this. I know there was discussion regarding the fire truck about budgeting that if it's easier for the townships to allow the city to pay, then the township should pay the city. That was discussed regarding the engine purchase. Regarding this capital purchase, I'm not sure, but it may, if it does help our trends to our, you know, north, south, east, west, I'd be favorable, well, let's do that.
I, I, yes, I was, I mean, I don't think it was, I don't think it was a question of, their objection was that this had been not presented as a, as a budgeted item and everything over a certain amount had to be presented as a budgeted item. So I didn't, this was from Larrabee, so I, I just was checking, was there agreement that they were going to pay their share at all, even if we, even if we lent them the money? So that, that question, you know, I think still exists.
Okay, well, with the capital expense, that's money that we have borrowed into two thousand fifteen.
Yes, I, I know.
Okay, so in the past, I believe that we've had agreements with them that we would pay upfront and they would reimburse us their share.
Well, yeah, I guess you need to check, but I, I just didn't, I didn't think that it was agreed. I think they said they had to take it back to their board and decide, so. Either way, I mean, we could certainly go ahead and pay, you know, pay our share, but the question would be, maybe do you know, John, John, James?
I'll speak for that, was actually brought up in the previous month. So the, so any action was tabled until this month, and at that meeting it was brought up, and the discussion was stated that the, due to the hiring of new personnel, equipment was needed. I know, I know Bear Creek and Mattson commented that they had, had gone back, you know, Bear Creek had, Mattson said that they unfortunately didn't have a meeting, but they weren't supporting it. So, you know, there was some conversation happened, there was nothing said, said as far as how that came across.
Larrabee's, Larrabee's the one that I, that I was questioning.
Yeah, Larrabee did ask the question, there was conversation, and then it's a vote.
So if we would be approving it, are we assuming that they're going to pay their share, Mark?
Chief Creek, you said it had moved to a vote, and we did pass it. Peggy pointed out that last night, the motion did include that the townships were allowed for beefing in two thousand fifteen.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Phil?
I would just add, Mayor, the work of the townships, Peter Knob, just to meet the quickness fire players.
Okay, any one else? Go ahead, please. Dunleavy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Schli?
Yes.
Dornet?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine zero.
All right, Mayor, item nine E, credit card policy. The staff, Administrator Kuss and staff, department has worked on coming up with a policy that will help improve the situation, to manage it better, as well as make it work before, still getting work on day to day. That policy is included in your packet on page forty-six or fifty. The finance insurance committee is recommending its approval to be recommended to our policy book and also.
I'll second that. Motion by Dornet, second by Schli to approve the credit card policy to be included in our policy handbook. Discussion, Greg?
I only have one question, the very last line on there, like a retroactive date. Can we, can we approve something now that says it was in effect two months ago?
Phil?
Yes.
So that's a typo? Basically, okay.
Okay, any others? I just got one question, and I'm thinking I'm maybe misreading this. Under number J, one J, does this mean that a person can have a card in their wallet that says city card, and they keep it until forever, until they leave employment or whatever? Or is that, am I misreading J, one J?
This is no person.
No person. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I am misreading it. I had a long wait, sorry. Well, wait, unless that person is active employee of the city. So it's like, well, no, we, those who are unemployed, so I mean, I can't have a credit card, but anybody else could just have it in their pocket until they're not working for us anymore. From what, the way I'm reading it.
Would you look at page fifty?
Okay.
For the credit card.
But isn't, isn't that kind of going back and forth, it's kind of the same thing? Because then it should just say, you can't carry that card unless you log it out and then you return it. But right here is what it's saying, you can't position a card unless a person is an active employee of the city. And I guess the wording there could be led to say, it says I can have it in my wallet for seven years. Yes.
April, would you please address? Well, the credit card is going to be kept and accessible with the certification at all times, and I think the intent is that they sign it out and then they can have it, if they have to go on to run something to London with City Fire, it would be.
Okay. One of the staff people out to work, help with, helping, try to clean off on this east coast. I guess I'm still looking at J, I'm really, the way it sounds, except basically someone is carrying it. Am I reading that wrong? I am reading it wrong? Okay, then I'm good.
They just, they have to be an employee of the city, nobody else.
Right, but it doesn't say, I hear, that they surrender it upon termination of employment or when they leave. It just says the minute they take it, so they can sign it out and have it indefinitely? Well, I'm just bringing that up, Phil, fair enough.
You know, I, I think reading it like that is excluding every other protective provision in the document, that they have to log all their uses, you have to turn in receipts, you have to do whatever else, so there are a number of, I thought, fairly strong protections in there, so to pull just that out and take it to what is kind of a, exactly the same with. Well, you could also all get hit by a meteoroid. I mean, even if they had it in their pockets for seven years, say, argument, they would have to every month turn in a detailed account of everything that was purchased and when and where and why, and also the tax implications of it would have to be recognized, and sheets are re-grewn if they probably get kicked back, so. For me, I'm comfortable that we've got hardball decisions that we did six months ago, and that were reasonable from the standpoint of protecting the city and giving our department head what they need.
Okay. Mary Beth?
I just wanted to explain for the, for those that haven't been following this, until this, we did not have any credit card policy, there was nothing in our handbook. So people know this isn't replacing another policy, this is a brand new policy.
Greg, Mayor Mark?
I'm, I'm very pleased by looking at this policy, it's much more secure than anything we had, which was nothing. And I feel that we're definitely moving in the right direction with this, and I would make, I don't want to touch out, Mark, but I do, I'm going to make a motion to.
Okay, you go ahead.
Then I don't need them. So I'm just, I'll conclude there, I support it.
Okay, Mark?
I'd just like to point out, it's not going in the handbook, it's going in the policy book. I'm done with the handbook issue, the policy.
Any other discussion? This one I'd love to go ahead and go on. Grant?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Schli?
Yes.
Dornet?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine zero.
Uh, where are we at? Nine E is a non-action, I report from right here, having staff, what's more information? Oh, this is, hang on, this is the equipment billable rates that is given in packet on page fifty-one. We'll have the Director of Health Works correcting it, I'm being pressed here, but this deals with setting our standard for how we build for our equipment to be needed for a natural disaster through the FEMA, we need to have a policy in place, a written stated policy that if we needed to be able to be reimbursed for these equipment, we don't just say it's two hundred dollars, it's a policy we have to place. And so that's what brought our Director of Health Works. Missing anything there?
And we also use these rates for when we work with cause, weekly, since their tractor is down. And another instance would be is if we are ordered, we have to clean up the property that someone has abandoned, we, they have these rate sets so we know how to reimburse or to apply to their, the property taxes, so we have a standard.
Okay, Mark?
Sorry, what was he adding? There was a question last night, whether we had all the equipment in there and the mayor.
We don't, this would be, my knowledge, we use, as experienced, under strong conditions, cleanup conditions, and cause disrepair, most highly used equipment. I guess if there's snow, probably months, then we'd have to add a greater, or two years ago.
I'll just follow up, it was a recommendation of the committee, a recommendation of the committee that even if we are missing something, we find, we can always add that later and update that this is part of the one we have, which is no stated policy, so.
Make the motion?
Oh, I'll make the motion, approve after presenting.
I'll second it. Motion by Dornet, second by Schli to accept the equipment billable rates as presented. Any other discussion? Phil?
One question. When will the rates start off, and will it be reviewed and by whom?
I guess I'd ask in what year? I, I would, I would assume that they would get reviewed yearly and probably from the recommendation of the street department to the finance committee.
And I agree in that discussion, also, we have to report this to FEMA every year. Any other questions? Okay, what's your call, please? Wilson?
Yes.
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Schli?
Yes.
Dornet?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine zero. Safety ordinance? I guess I'm going to have to, to shut here. Basically, what we have here is majority of them are going to be no action. The open records request, I think we have that on the attorney, to kind of, at our next meeting, to get some kind of a draft. Then powers of the city administrator, right now, because we're kind of in limbo, we're going to let that go and just not take any action on it right now, we'll bring it back. Committee on Committees, didn't take any action on that because we kind of, yeah, yeah, we kind of just, we can always bring that back. And the review of the chicken ordinance, I think it was in there, basically what we were, with the building permit on that one, and consensus on this one was, we had, hold on, now I missed, oh, wrong thing. We do have in there that you have to have a building permit, it's right in there, hold on, in the ordinance, yes, it is, and it's, gee, where was it? No, I didn't.
Page fifty-eight.
Page, oh, it's in there, here, I'm looking at the old one. Page fifty-eight, okay. Sorry, that's why I was confused. It is fifty-eight, is it one?
Number one.
Okay.
J one.
J one, okay, there you go. J one, you have to show the location for the coop, the run, and the drawing is dwelling and all that. And, and it has to be approved by the building inspector, and in that case, the building inspector has to, I guess, physically come to the property. And that's in there, ready, so right now, we're kind of ready to be, yes, make up.
Well, I had, a person was visited by the building inspector, and he asked her to hand over ninety dollars for a building permit right on the spot. I didn't know that he collected those fees on the spot, and also, again, we had a re- all those meetings and the idea was while we're talking about it, it's been, you know, send this expensive person out there when the plan is going to be down at city hall.
Okay, Gloria? I think what we have to do is send her back. I think we really have to look at this seriously and because it is right, I was kind of surprised that that was even in there when I was starting to read it through and I was a little confused that a fill, the building person was gonna actually come out. I thought, I was under the understanding basically that he was gonna break the plans and clean the body up. And also, and I was always under the understanding in Clintonville that if it wasn't attached and you could move it, it didn't need one. So, and I don't know when that ever changed because I know people have had greenhouses that are out there and so long since they can move it, so you don't need building for that.
I, I agree with Bill in that there are lots of regulations that would go into these chicken coops. And so if a person wanted to build one of these chicken coops and went through all those regulations, then by golly, they're gonna get it passed by the building inspector. And so therein, the building inspector is just another coop that costs a bunch of money and I think wouldn't be necessary.
Okay, Gloria? And I could think, and this is just my last thing, but I thought from what I understood the way this was set up, it's gonna be more of a health issue. Uh, it's the health inspector, like when we had Mike one over with pigeons and that's when, and I'm gonna think Toby would inherit that and he could go change chickens. But I'm thinking that's how it's gonna, and that's how I would understand, understanding that a health person was gonna come in. So I force you back. Gee.
Just on, uh, I think we directed staff last night, staff were capable to go back to, like, to the city of Madison and to the New Lares and to the cities that have this and see if they, what their cost is for their building permit or if they have them as well. Because I think it was in here, but I don't think we talked about it when we passed it. And it was in here the whole time, going back and looked at all of them and building inspector. And I guess we didn't realize there's an automatic clause for the building inspector. And I think that was our only fault.
Gray?
I make a motion that we return the chicken ordinance, the number is not just on the agenda, but return the, the chicken ordinance to the safety and. I make a motion that we send ordinance number one zero nine six back to safety and ordinance committee for further review.
Second. Motion by Rose, second by Easter to send the ordinance ten ninety-six back to committee for further discussion. Any other questions? We'll call please. Rose?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Schli?
Yes.
Dornick?
No.
Snyder?
No.
Rose?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Lurklin?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Schli?
Yes.
Dornick?
No.
Snyder?
No.
Rose?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Motion carrying six to three.
Uh, actually, I didn't have a chance to say anything about the committee on committees. The reason we're suggesting that was, was some time ago, I think it was already four months ago, and we've been waiting for some action on that. The county uses the committee on committee procedure and we'll be having an election coming up in April and we'd like to have something happen in this, so our committee procedure to change.
I'm sorry. Gloria? Yeah, if, you know, and because I was at a loss. I kind of didn't know what was going on with the committee on committees, so I kind of, I like, oh, April, huh?
Um, yeah, there was no information from the committee last night because we took no action on it, plus if we could allow attorney Dunleavy to speak on that.
Yes.
Yeah. So last night at the, the committee meeting, um, I saw that on the agenda, so I just checked it by statute. There's no statutory provision that says the council makes the committee. But we have an ordinance in Clintonville that specifically says the mayor makes committee. And there's no provision for, you know, the common council to make the committee. So it's kind of overstepping the council's authority to set committee.
Mary Rhett?
Well, the reason I referred it to the safety and ordinance committee is to change the ordinance. And it's an ordinance that says that the mayor appoints the committee. So that's the reason I suggested it and that's, that's the way the county, it isn't the council that's gonna be doing it. What I'm suggesting is the committee on committees, which would give input to the mayor and we talked about that way, what they do on the county level and you could ask Mr. Kevin to come in and talk to them on how they do it. But then they advise him as to who is good at what and they get input from the community and so forth. So it's a question of giving the mayor help with this, with the committee on committees. So, so it's an ordinance change, which is why I would refer to the ordinance committee.
Mark?
I would kindly thank you to Alderman Keith for clarifying that we don't have statutory, we can't have, based on statute, to make that decision. I would comment would be, there is, and we discussed a little bit this last night, committee that there is a balance of, of power, it's a legislative, judicial, it's just the balance of way it is. Now advising the mayor, I think any one of us could approach the mayor and say, these are my stories.
And I'd like to.
I don't feel we need a committee on committees to assess.
And I'd like to interject, when there is an opening or somebody has asked to remove from a committee, I talked to the department heads for their recommendations and I don't always owe their recommendations, um, but obviously I have input. My big one is the library, um, department head there, those which people use the library most of all and that's the type of person who work on that committee. And, um, yeah, Lisa has given me some suggestions. Lisa has never called anybody and offered them council, um, committee members. I took their advice. I made phone calls and without my recommendation, the council approved my recommendations.
Yes, Mary Rhett?
Yeah, I asked, after the committees were appointed, I asked the mayor at the meeting, who appoints the committees? And she said, I do. The next day in her office, she said, I'm sorry, I lied to you. Lisa has appointed some of the committees.
No, she doesn't, she doesn't appoint the committees. She makes recommendations as well as the department heads. I make the phone calls. If you'd like to call anyone that has been added to the committee, just find out who called them, put them on, or request them to be on the committee, please do so.
Yes, just, the reason I questioned it, um, when I ran for office, um, the mayor encouraged me to run for office against Alderman McHankins. Uh, when the committee appointments came out, he was, was given a committee chairmanship. And that's when I asked the question.
So you're mad that you didn't get recognition?
Did you get recognition?
So you're angry that you weren't given the safety chairmanship as Mr. McHankins?
No, I'm asking, I asked the mayor, who appointed the committees at the, at our meeting? Or she said, I do.
You might be, sat in that chair for years and years and earned the right to be chairman.
I'm not talking about that.
And it seems like you were.
Okay, that's not, that's. We will move on. Okay. Gray, I understand that she's wanting to come to the street committee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The street committee met last week and we discussed a number of items, first of which is a request to declare items surplus. Um, Toby Christian provided us with a list of various items that are in and around various buildings throughout the city that have just been gathering dust and are not used. Many items cannot be recollected when they were last used. And so kind of just clearing up some clutter and these items would be, uh, listed on the same municipal auction site, website that, uh, that the police car was, is going to. And so we made a recommendation to council to request, uh, to declare these items surplus. And I so moved.
I second. And those items are on page sixty of your packet. Uh, motion by Rose, second by Easter to infer the items surplus that are listed on page sixty in your, uh, packet. Any discussion? We'll call. Easter?
Yes.
Schli?
Yes.
Dornick?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion carrying nine zero.
And on to eleven B, replacement of streetlight update. We discussed streetlights and on page sixty-one in your packet was a, uh, handout provided by, um, Mr. Alexson, uh, going through some of the dollars and cents of what it would take to replace some of the streetlights in town. And, um, something that Mr. Alexson, uh, known was that the cost for LED lighting had come down and is attainable, um, and is financially feasible now beyond the point of where, you know, cities that first started using LEDs were writing big grants, uh, in order to get them. Now it's come down to where it's really, you can pick and choose between the two. The dollars and cents are not that different. And so, uh, some of the fixed charges, you can see there, uh, the high pressure sodium lights are, um, a little bit less in some ways, a little bit more in others. And then you gotta think about the wattage you're using. The high pressure sodium lights are running a hundred and fifty watts, the LED would be a hundred and ten watts and, um, you know, so on and so on. I'm not gonna go through all the, all of the differences between the two. But what, what was clear is that, um, he was in favor of changing the direction of the lighting in Clintonville, not just for ones that we might put back up in places where they were taken down a couple of years ago, but for all the lights that are currently up right now. And so that if a streetlight were to go out on the corner of your, of your block right now tonight, that we would be looking at probably replacing it with LEDs. And we have a few up in the city right now. And I can't remember exactly what the addresses are for those, but if you know where to look and find them, I know there's one on West Street. Um, and so you can kind of get a feel for what the new, the new lights are gonna look like that are probably gonna be showing up later on.
In front of city hall.
In the, okay, in front of city hall as well. Um, the other part of the discussion that we had was that there is a strong urgent, uh, urgency from constituents ever since the lights were taken down a couple of years ago, the seventy or so lights that were taken down, to have them put back up. And, um, I, I would say that when I talk to my constituents, that is the number one or number two issue on their minds is getting the lights back up. And so, uh, we discussed some of the dollars and cents of it. We recognize that there probably isn't money in this year's budget to be able to go and put all these lights back up. Um, Mr. Alexson also detailed that he just simply doesn't have the manpower to get them all back up right now either. So even if I were to wave a magic wand right now with the dollars to make it happen to order all these lights, they couldn't be put up really in a, in a very quick fashion anyway. But, um, I, I feel that it's important that, that I relay to the council and to the public that we have, um, made, made motions and, um, are starting to get the groundwork put forth to switch over to LED lighting and to, um, hopefully getting up some of those lights that were taken down, um, a couple of years ago. But again, I, I don't believe that it's gonna be an overnight switch. Um, oh, we did make a motion, um, to recommend to council to replace the lights, uh, that were taken down, uh, using, uh, capital expense monies from the twenty fifteen budget, similar to what, uh, the, the fire department was looking at that done with their equipment, uh, tapping into next year's budget to be able to do that, um, and stuff. Yeah, and, and to put up, um, according to manpower that's available.
Second. Okay, our motion by Rose, second by Easter to replace the streetlights that were taken down, using capital money from two thousand fifteen. Discussion, Mark?
When the original discussion on LED lighting came out with, uh, our former public works director McCord, I believe there was a question of whether the LEDs could put on lumens, if I'm using the right term, to replace the existing lumens, the standard that exists. And my first question is whether the committee looked at that and reviewed that. Second, is LED with this type of expense in all of the capital expenses?
That, I don't believe it is. Gray?
I know that, um, this is still in, in, in the works in that we're going to be getting more information back from Andy who's gonna look into that. Uh, there's gonna be some discussions with the PSC on this. Uh, so it's, it's still, you know, there's more information that is becoming known, um, as we go through this process. And as far as Mr. Dornick's, Alderman Dornick's, uh, question about lumens, um, Brian Alexson did mention that there are, I believe, three different wattages that are currently up, um, in and around the city. Again, I don't remember the addresses, but they vary in wattage and wattage varies in lumens. So you, you can go and get a feel for what that amount of light is by standing in or under those currently. And his top recommended one was the hundred and ten watt LED. He felt that it was coming from a reputable company and had a five-year warranty and so forth. So, um, you know, with, with Mr. Alexson's background, I feel that, um, he made a good judgment in that and I, I trust him for that. But as far as your concern about, is this a capital expense and those kind of things? Um, I know that's still working hard.
Gee, Bill, and Jen.
We had this on the utility, um, meeting last night as well.
and are starting to get the groundwork put forth to switch over to LED lighting and to hopefully getting up some of those lights that were taken down a couple of years ago. But again, I, I don't believe that it's going to be an overnight switch. Oh, we did make a motion to recommend to council to replace the lights that were taken down using capital expense monies from the 2015 budget, similar to what the, the fire department was looking to get that done with their equipment, tapping into next year's budget to be able to do that and stuff.
And.
Yeah. And, and to put up according to manpower that's available.
Second. Okay, our motion by Rose, second by Easter to replace the streetlights that were taken down using capital money from 2015. Discussion? Mark?
When the original discussion on LED lighting came out with our former color board director, McCord, I believe there was a question of whether the LEDs could put on lumens, if I'm using the right term, to replace the existing standard that exists. And my first question is whether the committee looked at that and reviewed that. And second, is LED with this type of expense in all of the capital?
That I don't believe it is. Ray?
I know that this is still in, in, in the works in that we're going to be getting more information back from Mandy, who's going to look into that. There's going to be some discussions with the PSC on this. So it's, it's still, you know, there's more information that is becoming known as we go through this process. And as far as Mr. Dornick's, Alderman Dornick's question about lumens, Brian Alexson did mention that there are, I believe, three different wattages that are currently up in and around the city. Again, I don't remember the addresses, but they vary in wattage and wattage varies in lumens. So you, you can go and get a feel for what that amount of light is by standing in or under those currently. And his top recommended one was the one hundred and ten watt LED. He felt that it was coming from a reputable company and had a five-year warranty and so forth. So, you know, with, with Mr. Alexson's background, I feel that he made a good judgment in that. And I, I trust him for that. But as far as your concern about is this a capital expense and those kind of things, I know that's still a work in progress.
Genie, Phil, and Jim. And we had this on the utility meeting last night as well. And we talked about it because the utilities owns the lights. The utilities is the one that has to buy the lights. I don't know if our constituents would be real happy if we put all these lights back up. And all of a sudden, the PSC says, well, we got to do a rate increase on our electric, on our electric bills because of the cost of all of this. That's, so we want to make sure, we want to find out how we can take it out because we don't have that number for one thing. We want to identify the safety and possibly put ones where there's safety concerns, that those will be the first to go off. But the, the question of the whole thing is, who's going to bear this cost? Because the utilities owns the lights. You, the city gets built, right, Mandy? The city gets built, the electric use. The utility is the one that has to file these lights. So that's the question of the day. I don't think that we can come out of the capital budget until we further investigate all of this. So, and I don't think it would be anywhere near happening for next year's budget. Phil?
I guess I'm a little true. We have a motion of second already. We've got a lot of questions. I'd like to see report.
Jim?
Okay, well, earlier this evening, we had a, I had a discussion with Jason about the lighting at the Veterans Memorial. And they have replaced all of the lighting over there from what it was, from the built LED light. And if anyone wants to know a location where you can see an improvement in the lighting, go over to the Veterans Memorial. You will really see a difference. And the cost, he was giving me a rundown on some of the cost. The cost of this, of this lighting system is unbelievably cheap compared to what we were paying.
Thank you. Mary Beth?
At the, at the meeting of the street committee, Mandy didn't point out that she was going to contact the PSC because we were uncertain who would bear all of the cost. We were going to check, you know, check into that because obviously, we're aware of that, that there is an implication for the utility. And since the cost to the citizens of lighting is going to be cheaper, I don't think, I don't think throwing out the idea that we're going to have a utility rate increase. This was something that, that people wanted. We're talking about in the motion. They're going to start just as manpower allows because they can't, they don't have enough climbing line and to climb up and do this. They're just going to start doing it. We're going to answer the needs of our constituents one by one. They're going to obviously take the first priorities first. They're going to look at the exact places where they need it the most. And that was something that they did look into. So it isn't going to be just half-past. And this was something that the electric department was very enthusiastic about. And they certainly were not reluctant to take it on. And we also then talked about contacting the PSC. So it wasn't something that we just half-pastingly thrown out and not understanding who was going to pay. They were not sure. But the citizens are, you know, it's a lower cost on bills because of the LED lights. So it is going to be a lower cost.
My reference to Mr. McCord dealt with, there's a state standard. So if we were to go up and down Main Street, I believe we were talking about the South Main where we did it. And he said, well, why do we need so many Cobra lights? Can't we just take everyone out? There was a safety standard that we had to meet with lumens that had applied that light in pathways. So it's not, although with very, all due respect to our head lineman, and he gives us good advice, it's a standard of the state. I don't know if that applies only to state highways, 245, if it applies to state streets or not. That was my original question. And it seems clear there's a question of whether this, these are going to be paid for by utility or by capital expense. So I'm still confused based on what Genie said. So I think we need not, I think we need to have both of these motions.
Ray?
I, I recognize that this was a recommendation to council regarding putting these lights up. But, you know, there is these questions. And I, I do think that we need to have them answered before we make any kind of motions that are unclear. So, you know, I, I do feel that we're heading in the right direction. We'll get the answers we need. We'll make it happen. But at this point in time, I'd have to agree that we need to have more, more questions answered before we move on.
Okay, we'd like to postpone.
Yes, I will rescind the motion.
I'll rescind the second.
Or you could have amended your motion to postpone it for the next meeting.
It's okay. We'll put it on the next agenda.
Motion by Rose, second by Easter to rescind the motion on replacing streetlights to capital funds in 2015.
Well, can I stop a second? I just, I just have one comment. You know, when the South came, right back to the get-go, it was to save, I mean, seven thousand dollars a year. And we voted this through. And now we are in such a pickle. And at the time when this went through, the complaints were rampant. We, I had little ladies calling with crying. They were afraid to leave their doors. They were afraid to open the door because they couldn't see who was there. And now it's come to this. And if some of us would have really did some deep thought and not fell into the trap to save seven thousand dollars a year. And basically, shame on the council that was sitting at that time. This never should have even happened to be coming to this. But we kind of got led down a path and this is how it rolled to save seven grand. And I'm really unashamed of us because it's awful. And I'm so glad that Greg and Mary Beth, you've got the initiative. You're going for it. And we're going to get these lights back to these people because it still is a great concern. That's it.
Thank you, thank you.
Listen, Tom, wait a minute.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Donald's next.
Okay, how many incidents did we have for safety studies for law? Eddie?
That statistic is not available to me at this time. I can't, I don't have that pre-done. I don't know if we, and I don't know what, of any of our arrest data has ever had that included in any of the criteria when we make arrests. Where if that, how we go back and retrieve that? I don't know how we do it.
And I don't like the streetlights taken down when you're here. But I got one up when I met my place at sixty foot apart. I measured it, sixty foot apart. Then you took down one that would shoot. That shouldn't have been taken down. I think that is right, sixty foot apart.
Mary Beth?
As, as we said when those of us that were campaigning, this was a number one issue. So we're trying to do something that the people are asking for. And there was, and as I understand, I wasn't here, but I understand there were, there was great outcry. There were crowds of people coming and testifying, and it was ignored. So we're trying to respond to that. And it seems like now we're trying to put roadblocks. We're trying to do something for the community that, that people want. When I, just my, my cousin's property, we just closed it up. And what we were advised, first of all, by the city was put up some security lights because it's dark on that corner. And then if you put some motion detector lights, we can prevent people from breaking in. So we were told by the authorities that light would help prevent that property from breaking in. So I think Mr. Kraus has said as an officer, you know, light is the cheapest thing we can do. And we do have people saying, as I said, that when we campaigned, that was the number one thing. So we're going to not ignore this request by our constituents.
Mark?
I think no one here is asking anybody to ignore it. And these, these requests are valid. We need to concern them. But these are not roadblocks. These are legitimate concerns of who's going to pay for it. These aren't roadblocks. If we need to know where the light is, how funding, who owns the lights?
Okay. Are we ready? Genie, you have a. Oh, the request to declare the 1996 order range of surplus. Is there a, is there a, is there a bill? Oh, separate give, and we will look at them there and see what we get.
Dr.
Oh, I'm in the motion. Okay. I didn't make it quite, but seconded it. Thank you. Okay, the motion by, second by, this is what I understand that we're going to start at seven thirty?
Yes.
On, on line surplus. Any steps? We'll call from Schla?
Yes.
Dornick?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Motion passed nine zero. And twelve C is not happening.
What do you mean?
Where this is not taking place at this time. Okay, so.
At the last meeting, I'm still on board, but I handed out some instructions that the, that Mr. Walker Ford was going to be approached about his study, trying to see about the feasibility. And they have not been approached?
They have been approached and they've changed their mind.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions? Then I need a motion to Rose to close session for item sixteen and Rose C.
Okay, I knew we had turned into closed session. First one, Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five, Fr. Francine for a back repeat. Francine, considering employment promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility slash friends F, considering its financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations slash G, considering as legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning tragedy to be adopted by the body with respect to the limitation in which it is or is likely to become involved for the purpose of reviewing a personnel investigation matter, continuing the investigation, or returning the scope of the investigation, considering potential action on the matter slash may reconvene in open session. Who would you like to have?
Attorney Dunleavy? And then also move to adjourn to closed session, first one, Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five, Fr. Francine, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility slash friends A, utility manager position and hiring B apprentice lineman position slash may convene, reconvene into open session for possible action. Who would you like to have present? Attorney Dunleavy, Verne, Captain Hayes, Mandy, and Peggy. And we will do twelve C first. Okay. So move.
Second.
Motion by, Easter, second by Rose to adjourn to, adjourn in closed session. We'll call please.
Dornick?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Dunleavy? Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Motion carrying. The council has authorized the attorney to proceed motion to adjourn. So move. Second, motion by Easter, second by Dunleavy. All those in favor?
Right.
Motion carrying.